Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular board meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order at 6:01. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Could you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please remain standing for moments of silence to acknowledge the tragedy that had happened over Memorial Day weekend? Our hearts go out to the family and the community. Alrighty. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Mr. Krim. Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Nebares Martinez.
Present.
Mr. Nabeski.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Willis. Or Ms. President.
We are aware that our beloved Madam President will not be able to join us this evening, and our beloved Trustee Krim is also out for the evening. Are there...I would like to call Trustee Williams, if you would, to please read...because you've read the mission statement. That's what I thought. Trustee Williams to please read our mission statement at this time.
Our mission statement is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposefully and fulfilling lives.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? With that being done, are there any public comments on agenda items? No? Alrighty. Well, let's move into our presentations at this time. Dr. Wheeler, we would love to have you join us and share with us great news about the district.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you as we bring the school year to a close. Our COVID report continues to be a good one. With only four staff cases reported in May, this mirrors the state and county numbers with few cases being reported. Student cases also remain low with only six cases reported in May at five different schools. Reflecting on the school year, we had 318 staff cases, 700 student cases reported, for a total of 1,018 cases throughout the school year. We reached our peak in December and then experienced a steady decline throughout the year. The low numbers and updated respiratory guidance from the CDC and MDHHS will certainly guide our protocols for the fall. The Student Development Program will begin summer programming next week with the addition of a partnership with the Northwest Initiative to add the gardening and nutrition program. We will also have a youth mentorship program directed by retired MSU basketball coach, Mike Garland. We will be open Monday through Thursday from 11:00 to 5:00, and Fridays from 11:00 to 1:00 for open gym and lunch. Students in grades four through 12 may participate at no cost. Students are continuing to use the services and programs at the Field House with attendance remaining steady at about 2,500 student sessions per month. The total sessions this year reached over 14,500, a terrific year for the Student Development Another popular program has been, of course, the BIPOC Care Closet. We were able to fulfill more than 4,000 orders, which provided more than 16,000 items to students across the district. At the end of May, we distributed a survey to all families in the district seeking feedback regarding the program. These are some sample comments that we received. The majority of the comments were very positive and thankful for the Care Closet help. We did receive some feedback about not having our products exclusive to the BIPOC population. I want to be sure to reiterate tonight that all students are welcome to access the Care Closet. The Care Closet will be accessible to all students with a wider variety of products for students regardless of their BIPOC identification. Our most common and favorite comments are, "This is an amazing idea that really helps Another question we asked was, "What is the one product you would like to see offered?" and had a long list of suggestions from the students in the district. We have taken those suggestions to heart, and we'll see some changes in the BIPOC Care Closet in the fall. We also completed the Board of Water and Light Water Safety Pilot Program, the only school district in Michigan that was participating. Post Oak and Wexford, grades K-3, participated in the pilot program. They participated by selecting a water safety captain each week who completed a daily classroom tap flush. The students learned that the daily flush reduces or even eliminates lead content in pipes not used for six hours or more. The goal from the Board of Water and Light is that students will take this knowledge home with them and practice this flush in their homes as well. Next year, we hope to expand the program for all K-3 elementaries. As we close the school year, I would like to share a sample of some health and wellness highlights from the 23-24 school year. One of my favorites was the Office of School Culture hosting a staff appreciation picnic in May with a special focus on mental health. Hundreds of staff gathered together for food, entertainment, and community. It was a wonderful event. We also continued, of course, the HRA grant, the Student Development Program, our BIPOC Care Closet, and many more. We also were able to provide training and distribution of Narcan to all DPS, all nurses, and a stock Narcan dose to be held in all school offices. And, of course, our standards have...we achieved over a 95% immunization rate district-wide by February 1st, and we began the first year of participation in the kindergarten dental screenings in partnership with the Ingham County Health Department. We also had the Mileage Club return with support from Michigan State University Sports Medicine Department. That's a student favorite. And as we move into the 24-25 school year, we look forward to continuing these health initiatives with many new and exciting opportunities coming our way as well. I greatly appreciate your commitment to health and the well-being of our students as they navigate their academic journey with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wheeler. We appreciate all that you do as well, giving us the report, what, every three months or so? Every month? Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Dr. Wheeler? Yes, Dr. Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're to celebrate the end of the year together. The Lansing School District Care Closet Feedback, that...how is that developed in every school? Where is located? Where is the place?
For the Care Closet Feedback. For the Care Closet, yes, thank you. The Care Closet materials are actually housed in the Office of School Culture at the Halleck Center, and then the students make the orders, and the nurse team delivers them to the students at each school.
Madam President, I think that maybe next year we have a special day, the whole board go to visit all these things that we are receiving information. And spend one day together visiting a school, visiting here, visiting there, they have an idea of what is going on. And I think that I was more willing to spend one day knowing our school, knowing what is going on, and more than just receiving information, verbal words, and we experiment really what is going on in the district.
Yes, there's so many wonderful things to see. We invite you to come anytime.
Thank you.
But we do it together, find it, and I think that is a way to know.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Trustee Navarro Martinez, did I say that right?
Nebares Martinez.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. I was wondering, for the Care Closet, do we know what item or items were the most requested?
Yes, we do. Not surprisingly, the items that may be more expensive for the students to buy and common items that they would routinely use, like the shampoos, the conditioners, deodorant, those sorts of things.
And with the...so, I was interested in one of the comments as well, where it said, "Make products available for all ethnicities, not just BIPOC population," and then also over here, "More items for people who do not identify as BIPOC." Do we have shampoos and things like that that are for certain types of hair and that type of?
Yes. Part of the BIPOC closet has been shampoos that are more geared towards the BIPOC population. We do have other items available, though, as well, and any student can use the closet.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Trustee Williams.
Are we...is the BIPOC closet going to be available to the students this summer or no?
Yes, we do have items that we have reserved for students who are making a request in the summer. Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you. I was gonna actually...oh, yes, Trustee Nowinski.
I was just gonna ask, are the COVID reporting, is that a required report, or is that a voluntary thing the district is doing at this point?
You know, it's really a wonderful voluntary thing that our district does. It is no longer required to be reported, but in transparency, we've continued that this year.
And a follow-up, I don't know if this is for you or the board, maybe, but your report is given monthly. How is that determined as a requirement or a desire for the board to have this particular topic monthly?
I...oh, I will refer a guest to us as a board.
I'll try to answer, and then, you know, during the height of COVID, there was a requirement from MDE as well as the Health Department. When that requirement went away, the board and the superintendent, not to speak of myself in the third person, but the board and I made a decision that we would continue to do it. Today will be the last one for a while because it's going into summer, and I would just defer to the board to decide if you would like Dr. Wheeler to continue with these or not, or if she continues with them, if there's other information you'd like to hear. But it's absolutely the prerogative of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know how I thought you were coming every three months, but I appreciate you coming every month. I do have just a couple of questions. One of the questions I was gonna ask was, was the BIPOC closet available this summer for our students? And so, it's good to hear that. But for the Student Development Program, I'm really excited about that program as well. Do we have any...do we, like, hire our students to come in and work for the summer or mentor for the summer? Do we have students that take on, like, a leadership role in that space?
We have not had that at this point. Of course, you know, we're only finishing year one.
Yeah.
So, we have wanted to be very careful about...and being intentional about how we had trainers and supports for the students, but that's something we can certainly look at moving forward.
Yeah, I could just see students that are really interested in that field wanting to build...be a part of it and also building up their own leadership skills, right?
Yeah.
Their own skills. So, thank you so much for reporting. If there...did you wanna say...oh, I thought you were gonna say something. So, oh, yes, Dr. Kavanaugh.
This is really just a comment. I was just really struck by your Department of Health and Wellness kind of end-of-the-year highlights. It really is incredible, everything that's been accomplished this year, especially seeing the growth of the Student Development Project. So, I just wanna commend your department for the work that they've done this year.
Thank you.
I did all that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Wheeler. We really appreciate you, and have an amazing summer.
Thank you. You too.
You're welcome. Alrighty. Alrighty. Well, Benjamin.
Alright.
Superintendent, it's on you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's great to be here. This is the last board meeting of the school year. Tomorrow is the last day of school, which is incredible to think that that is true. Graduation is gonna be on Saturday at the Breslin Center. Congratulations to the hundreds and hundreds of children of Lansing who are completing their education and will be so justly given their diploma. I just cannot say how proud I am of the students of all of our schools, the faculty at all of our schools, the staff at all of our schools, and, of course, the families that are there to support them. Nothing is public yet in terms of our graduation rate, but it is just incredible to see the number of students that we are graduating and the colleges that they're going to. This is now the third year of kind of this focus on graduation and getting our children off to, you know, kind of bigger and better and amazing things, and this year, we have been just overwhelmed. And so, I wanna just give a special shout-out to all of the high schools and all of the high school students that have done so much work to get over the finish line and to walk across that stage at Breslin on Saturday. Very much looking forward to that. And then, to kind of couple that, of course, you heard that we took a moment of silence. This community was devastated by events over the Memorial Day weekend. I think the community knows that I wrote a pretty long letter to it to express my feelings, but also I know the feelings of so many others. It is a tragedy when anyone in our community is hurt or killed, but there is something somewhat worse, I guess, and somewhat more devastating and more heartbreaking when it's a student, when it's a young person, when it is somebody who always has so many years ahead of them. I don't wanna belabor the point. I think we've said a lot over the last two weeks, but just because this is the first formal time we've had the board since those events, to be not only incredibly respectful of the folks that have gotten hurt and the families that have been impacted, and to send you all of my love and support and care, but also to all the people in the community that have been affected. We've spent a lot of time these last couple of weeks really discussing what we can do, and my hope is, over the summer, the school district can really think critically about what we can do to help support the safety and security of our community. You know, first and foremost, it has to be our buildings. It has to be our schools, of course, and I wanna commend Cordelia and Dale and our incredible...our incredible team in public safety. But we also have to think a little bit broader. What does it mean for a school district to help support the entire community and the entire city? It is...it is the worst thing to have to bury a child and one that you're connected to because of the school district. And, you know, again, my heart really goes out to the families and the entire community. I've been met by so many people over the last couple of weeks who didn't even know the children but have been impacted and want what's best for our community. So, again, you know, we have to take the good with the bad, the good being the incredible work that's being done in our schools, the children learning, the educators teaching, the families supporting, but also recognize that there's a lot to be done and more that we can do for this community. It is the last board meeting of the year, so this will be the last time you hear me do this. Hopefully, it is the last time ever, although I doubt it. Again, we were able, by the end of the year, 2,679 gas cards, which is really quite impactful. We have about 10,000 kids in the district, so more than a quarter of our students are taking gas cards. CATA at 790, which, again, is about a tenth, I mean, a little less than a tenth of the district, but many of our high school students. And then with Dean, we're still routing 3,593. So, you're still talking about thousands of children on the bus, and at this point, only 42 requests and 72 that are non-routable. It is certainly our hope that if you are applying early and we're getting our routes done as quickly as possible, we'll be able to bring those numbers down to single digits. That's certainly our hope. Just had a meeting with Dean today so that we can discuss all the things that we need to do with this relationship. As I've said since the moment I got here, I certainly apologize that we're not able to provide busing for every child at every time, but we are trying our darndest, and certainly the gas cards and the CATA cards, which is something that is pretty rare for a school district. Families seem to like it, so it is certainly our intention to continue to offer them next year. I've had some questions about, are we gonna continue to do this? Absolutely. Certainly, the gas cards and the CATA is something that we owe to this community. I know the transportation is open, so please, if anybody is listening, please sign up for it now. The sooner you get your names and your child's names in the system, the better, and, of course, the more that we can do to route these programs so that we can get as many of our children to school on time is something very, very important. So, with that, I know we actually do have a Did You Know? It's about one of my favorite parts of this district, and you can see why it's such a great thing for us. But as this is the last board meeting of the school year, I wanna thank this board for their incredible leadership and service to this community. I wanna thank the community for all that they've done, the educators, and kind of lastly, of course, the students. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have a school district, but it also would...it's because of you we get up in the morning. It's because of you that we do this work, and so I just wanna thank everybody who's been a part of this school district. So, thank you to students. Thank you to families. Thank you to educators. Thank you to the board. Thank you to everybody that has the Lansing School District in their mind. And with that, take it away, Ryan. We're...there we go. Saddle up.
Yeah, we're...this is an incredible experience today. Love coming here. Honestly, experience is everything, to just see the kids with the horses, brushing them, walking them around, making observations. I had a student come up and say, "This is the best field trip." I mean, some of them are interacting with the horses for the first time, and it's just
This would be a number-one go-to within the school district or outside in the community. Come in and explore with our great volunteers and staff and the animals that we have here at our equine center. This is a golden opportunity that is not available anywhere else in the state of Michigan within the school district that has a therapeutic riding available for community-based learning, field trips, accessing something beyond their neighborhood. Most of us in the Lansing area are not going to have a horse in our backyard. This is a wonderful learning opportunity. If you're coming in, it helps students engage with the animals, the teachers, in a whole new way that is not normally seen by us. It's an awesome experience to see their faces light up and shine.
I don't know, I just like feeling how I feel in the saddle and just, like, the connection.
Trotting, yeah, I like it. I like trotting and walking. It makes me feel, like, so free when I can see it.
How long have you been riding?
Since I was seven and I started at Beakman.
How old are you now?
Twelve. Like, since I started riding here, the first thing that they told me is horses will feel your emotions, if you're anxious, if you're scared, if you're happy, if you're sad. So, like, they'll feed on that. So, like, you can't really...like, you can be sad, but definitely you won't stay sad when you're on a horse. Like, you can't help but smile every now and then, or like, just, like, think about it, like, once...like, when they ask you to stop and just stand there, like, when you stop and stand there for a minute when you're on a horse, it's like, you can't feel no, like, hard emotions when you're on a horse. It's like, oh, like, you feel free and you feel happy. Yeah. Like, you definitely feel, like, some emotions when you start, like, when you get there. You could be mad, but like, once you do start, like, yeah, it's great. It's like, feel happy. They just change your whole mood and perspective on how you feel.
I've known about Beakman for about...since the 80s when they started. The experience is so good, being here, being with the horses. It's sort of more of a natural setting for me. Just seeing the benefits physically of riding is very good. It's...I'd say the ride is the highlight of my week. It feels really good, really, even the connection, and like, in the weather like this, the warmth. I don't need to have a coat on. It's just a very pleasant place, and like with riding the different horses, it's really interesting to see the different behavior, the different gaits. Very good, very good. I wish more people did this. Occasionally, think about bringing my cat. But I think a lot of people, riding is something you probably never expected to do, and then to be with a horse, get on a horse, be with other people, that it's really special. There's a comment for you.
Thank you to the comms team for putting that together, and, of course, to the equine therapy program. It is really a special thing, and, you know, there's been so many studies and so much research about animals and support for adults and children, and the fact that we're able to have such a robust program in Lansing. Somebody who grew up on the 19th floor of an apartment building overlooking New York City, I maybe have been on a horse twice in my entire life, and just the idea that we have something like this, and you see how the children light up and the adults light up, it's really something special. So, certainly, we'll try to make that video like we make all the videos public, and if anybody listening or knows of anybody that wants to be part of this program, please reach out. There's community ride times, there's student ride times, there's school ride times, and we just...we wanna offer all of our great programs to this community. So, thank you for that, and turning it back over to the acting president.
Thank you, Superintendent. We do have some gyms here at Lansing, in the Lansing School District. Such an honor. Dr. Rodriguez, did you have a question?
Yes, Madam President. Talking about transportation, are the new buses going to start in September or these electric buses then?
I...thank you for bringing that up. As some might know, we did win a large grant, a competitive grant, to get electric buses. They are at least a year away. There's a huge backlog for getting them, plus we need to create the infrastructure to charge them. So, we were...again, I was meeting with the dean today. It is our hope to get them on the road soon, but we think that, at least with the charging and all of the stuff, it's gonna be in a series of years. One of the other things, and we haven't mentioned this too much, one of the rationales of...we got 15 in one grant and five in another, that's a total of 20, is that we're gonna try to get six or seven the first year, six or seven the next year, and then six or seven the third year. The reason why we do that is because if there's ever gonna be a recall of anything, we wanna make sure that it would only be one. But it's not...we don't think they're gonna be on the road this coming year, but our hope is the year after. But we gotta buy them, we gotta figure out how to charge them, et cetera. But we're thrilled, and we look forward to moving forward with it.
Do we have any other questions for our superintendent? Yes, trustee.
Just a comment. Can we add the horses to our board field trip?
That would be nice.
I love it.
That would be...yes, trustee.
Yes, Madam President. I was...would like to ask the superintendent to maybe expand upon the gun violence issue and what forums there will be over the summer for students and community members to participate in that dialogue. and community members to participate in that dialogue and planning. And then, along with that, the conversation about the board being updated, if there would need to be a closed session for us to review those policies, or how we can come up to date with what's happening.
No, thank you very much for that question. You know, I think that moving forward, certainly a conversation with the board and executive team and the community around what we can do is really important. You know, let's get through Saturday and the graduation, but, you know, we've been in conversation, of course, with the mayor, the police department. And I know that certainly we've talked about it and we've communicated via, you know, email and things like that. But I hope that over the summer that we can convene not only, you know, communities, but having conversations about what the school district can do. It is, it's a difficult position to be put in because, of course, a school district has to focus on the schools and has to focus on our children, but we know that their safety and security is of the utmost importance. And if we need to help go out into the community to do that, I think we have to. So certainly, the board will be updated as we move forward. And honestly, the board will be a co-creator of these things. A couple of years ago, former trustee Lilji and current vice president and acting president Moore put together a series of community meetings. I think that that's something that was really awesome. And I think there's a lot we can do, and I look forward to those conversations.
Any other questions for our superintendent tonight or at this time? Alrighty. Moving on to our routine matters, our committee reports. First, we have the Facilities Committee, trustee Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I go into some of the items that we're going to act on, I just want to let you know and the community is that every Tuesday at 11:00, right there in the middle, it's a big meeting, which includes district staff, our construction managers, our subcontractor, not subcontractors, but our engineers and so on and so forth, that discuss and go over things that have to do with a bond program, with the schools that we're building, and so on and so forth. And everything is discussed from the color of the chairs or the floors or the ceilings, whatever, to what kind of infrastructure we're going to need for, and how much it will cost, and so on and so forth. So it's direction of... Stoker over here? And Mark Alexa, who's our representative from Plant Moran. And so it's a two-hour meeting, if not more, but goes through everything that's happening and updates on, and then everything that is happening till then. And I know some of the things that have come up, presentations to the board about how the school concepts and et cetera are thoroughly discussed at this meeting. And so I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that and that the community is aware of that, that that's an ongoing process. And I think it's going to be going for the next several years, right? So we have lots to go through. In today's action items, we have a request for change order for Gardner, concrete replacement, and change order for Hill, for lightning for the track. So we can discuss those items when we come back to those, but I just want to make sure that you know that that's on the agenda for today. And that's it, as far as report goes.
Alrighty. Any questions for Mr. Lopez at this time? Trustee Lopez? Alrighty, moving... I keep turning off my microphone. Moving on to the personnel report, and I guess I'll be giving that report unless one of my colleagues would like to give that report. Okay, I'll give the report. In your packet this evening is the personnel report for June 6th, well, dated for June 6th. The Personnel Committee met on the May... Talk to me. Right? May 24th. And that meeting also is an open meeting for the community. We meet actually in this room at 3:00. And the information is also posted if you're interested in attending. So we have several retirements in our personnel report this evening. I want to acknowledge all of our retirees, but I want to do a special shout-out. Forty-nine years of service, forty-nine years of service in the Lansing School District to Ladonna Mask. Thanks again for your service. And everyone who's retiring, we appreciate all that you've done for the Lansing School District. We have, I don't want to say quite a few resignations, but we do have resignations, and they were, and they're actually starting, it looks like, or effective in August. So it gives us enough time to fill those positions. We have several new hired non-teachers that'll be joining us, and we have a new hired special education specialist that'll be joining us at Sexton. So welcome all of our non-hires and our, excuse me, our new hired non-teachers and our new hired teachers to the Lansing School District. Trustee Nowinski, would you like to chime in and say anything about our meeting, or?
I'm just, would add that we're, you know, continuing to look at ways to recruit and retain staff in the district and hope to be fully staffed by next year. I know the HR department is trying multiple avenues throughout the state and beyond, even beyond the country, to find quality teachers for our classrooms, and we are eager for that gap to be narrowed in the coming years. I also might offer, I know the board has received several comments about librarian services, and this might be a time to ask the administration to kind of just share where we're at.
Can't really discuss HR concerns like that at this moment.
All right. Thank you so much for that, for that response, and thank you for that question. Any other... Yes, trustee or secretary Lopez or Rodriguez? I need to get it right tonight.
You are doing fine. Don't worry about it.
Bless you.
Thank you. We have about eight, nine, 10 retirements.
Yes.
When is the last day for they can tell us when they want to retire, or what is the process in how we are going to find out that we can start hiring people?
So, you know, there's a couple of ways to answer that question. The first is, an employee is allowed to retire and resign at any time that they want. There's no law that says they've got to tell us at a certain time. Of course, that puts us in a difficult position sometimes if we learn on August 20th that they're not coming back on August 21st. But what we have, are able to do, and one of the things, and I have to commend the HR department for doing this, is even if we don't know formally, and we might know that somebody is considering, we can start to look for hiring folks. And one of the things that we've been talking about is hiring as many people as we can that fit our criteria so that if we do find somebody that's going to retire at the end of the year, we're able to do it. But there is no specific, you know, person that's allowed to do whatever they want. I wish, you know, I understand that that's difficult, but it is what it is. So I don't know, Christina, if there's anything you want to add, but, you know, it's, we try to staff as best as we can with the knowledge that we have. And certainly, if somebody wants to let us know if they're retiring early, that's great. But if they want to wait to the last minute, that is certainly their prerogative.
No, I was just going to reiterate what you had said, that anybody can retire anytime. Obviously, we encourage, if you know, to let us know as soon as you know, just so we can make sure we work on staffing the classrooms for students.
Alrighty. Oh, yes, trustee Kavanaugh.
I just want to raise for folks working, or folks watching this at home, that of our new hires, we have a school social worker and a multilingual trauma social worker. So two of our new hires include folks in the social work field, which is also a field that's experiencing a hiring shortage. So I want to commend the district for making those two incredibly important hires, particularly as we continue as a board having discussions around gun violence prevention. It is critical that those are the sorts of positions that we staff. So I was very heartened to see that on the report. Thank you.
Thank you for lifting that. That was great. And it's for the welc... Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. And for the, those positions are the Welcome Center. Is that the new Welcome Center in front of Gardner, or no?
Yeah, so that should really be the, unless that is, is it for the Welcome Center, or is it for the newcomers? Great. So just as a reminder, we're going to be opening up a special location next to Gardner that's going to be servicing families and students that are coming from other countries that need extra support. But we also have a lot of those supports at the Welcome Center. So I think depending on where they're assigned, a lot of times people could have two placements. But it is a really wonderful thing that this district is doing for our newcomers. So at the Newcomer Center they'll be, but they'll also probably be at the Welcome Center, as well as a handful of other schools.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Oh, yes, trustee Lopez.
Yes, on this individual's listed that had a very short tenure with the district, are any of those able to, maybe teaching was not their thing, but other positions in the district?
Christina.
Yep. So our recruitment and retention team spend a lot of time with people who are choosing to leave the district, to talk to them about other positions that they may feel is a better fit for them in the district. So I want to just give a shout-out to the team, Andrew Utter and the rest of the HR team. We constantly are having conversations about best fit, even if, you know, some teachers feel comfortable, or just people in general positions reaching out and saying like, hey, this isn't a good fit for me. I'm thinking about leaving. We work with them to try to find something that might be the right fit for them here.
Sure. Because I know that we not only hire teachers, but other professionals, and sometimes teaching or a professional they choose doesn't work out, and that that was open for them.
Absolutely. And we have a series of people that have been in one position and have moved to another, either best fit, or promotion, or different salaries, different timing. I know that sometimes some of the jobs have certain cadences of hours and days, and they can change it. So again, as Christina said, the hope is if you are a great employee, we will try to find a way to keep you here. And if we find this is not a great fit, we will hope you good luck somewhere else.
Alrighty. Yes, trustee?
Yeah, so looking at the list of resignations and then the retirements, it goes from, I think, the, from the resignations from four years, that's the person that has the most in that category, to 14 years, which is like a decade in difference. It seems like there's something crucial maybe that happens in those first couple of years, that if we're able to retain them, then they'll stay long-term. So just kind of maybe looking at what can be done in that, like, crucial time period to kind of retain folks.
Absolutely. And actually, and that's a nationwide trend, is that the first couple of years are really crucial. Either you find out that you really like being in schools, or you find out you don't. You find out either you're good at it or not. And then there's typically that kind of middle years, that five to 15, four to 10, four to 14. And then it's really on the district to make sure that they're staying in our district and rather than looking at some other district. And then by kind of year 14, 15, especially if they're second career folks, they're starting to look at other things. But I'm really glad that you pointed that out. And as this board knows, and as the Human Resource Committee knows, we're starting to do some kind of deeper data analytics to see what's actually happening. And I look forward to the HR presentation that is going to be at ISS soon, I think sometime in the spring, in the fall, so.
Trustee Williams?
I have a couple of questions. I do know that we've been asking about the data regarding the exit interviews and things like that, and we have not received that yet. Are we going to get that information, and will it be reflected in how these people are resigning or choosing to leave? And also, it's still concerning because the resignation numbers are going up, be it that they're lunch aids or not. We went from 13 the last report to 22. That's pretty big. And like she said, the most of that resignation group, somebody has four years, that's the highest of seniority. It's concerning. And then the other thing is, I did ask that demographics be represented, if they're Caucasian, black, white, and we still haven't seen that. Is that going to be added to the report?
That's a good question. We can talk about that at the next Personnel Committee meeting, about that information being added to the Personnel Report. But I do want to lift that, I do see how the first couple of years are crucial. And if, I mean, either it's going to work or it's not as far as being a teacher. It's not easy being in the classroom. So I'm not surprised with the turnover in our, in the years of service. But we will, we will have a conversation about adding that information, trustee Williams, to the Personnel Report, because I do remember you requesting that. So thank you for that. Okay, that's, yeah, if we can, if we can add that, if that's what you'd like, yes, we can, we can hopefully get that done. Alrighty, any other questions for me? Alright, if none. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Great, thank you. The Finance Committee met on the third Monday of the month, as we always do. Of course, those meetings are also open to the public. In this case, the meeting was held on May 20th. The detailed Treasurers Report for the period of April 1st, 2024, through April 30th, 2024, is attached to this evening's agenda for your review. The following are the highlights of that report. The beginning cash and investment balance was $60,214,711. Receipts totaled $19,523,948, while disbursements equaled $30,195,583. Net inter-fund transfers totaled $10,398,682 in interest from fund investments to the student and bond funds, as well as journal entries to remove due to, due from, in all funds. The monthly transfer to the general fund for bond expenses was $1,461,204. The ending general fund cash and investment balance on April 30th, 2024 was $61,402,962. The general fund's cash and investment balance is $26,216,714 greater as compared to this time last year. So we love that. So the district continues to make wise financial choices and remain in good financial health. I also want to highlight that we received a number of donations in the month of April totaling over $100,000, $107,181. So that is amazing. There's a few that I want to shout out. The National Financial Services LLC made a donation of over $100,000 to the Equine Learning Center. So very apropos that we got to enjoy learning about the Equine Center in our Did You Know today. And I also want to highlight that a bunch of individual members, as well as the Lansing Fiesta LLC, who are part of the Latino Advisory Council, all made donations toward our graduates to support scholarships for our graduates. And in particular, I think there's like seven or eight different members of the Breones family. So we want to highlight them in particular, and the Lansing Advisory Council, Latino Advisory Council, sorry, as a whole, for their generosity and supporting our graduates. We also saw donations from the Lansing, South Lansing Business Association, Blackbowed and General Motors, Moi Nying Israel, and Blackbowed and Accenture. So we would like to thank all of our donors because we extremely appreciate their generosity. Madam President, this includes the April, this concludes the April 2024 Treasurers Report.
Thank you, trustee Kavanaugh. That was great. That was great. Moving on to our action items, we have, oh, I'm sorry, I don't, please pardon me, pardon me. Are there any questions for trustee Kavanaugh this evening?
I'm still seeing the same item line, supplies and services, on one spreadsheet that says $7,908,755. But then we are also seeing $1,461,204 in a bond. Is that 1 million for a part of that seven, or are those two different funds? And then, what are we spending so much money on supplies and services for like that?
I would refer to Kim, superintendent?
So the 7.9 million in supplies and services, that is our non-bond spending for grants, general fund. The 1.4 million that you see down below, that's the reimbursement to the general fund for the bond payments that we issued during the month of April. Two different things.
Okay, so there's two different things, but that still seems like a lot for supplies and services for one month.
Services?
Supplies and services. Is it covering... Because it doesn't seem like that. I'm thinking about the Sedexo Mag- thinking about the Sedexo magic con, contract in my head, and that's not all going to Sedexo. Where else is that going? I guess that's the question.
No, it wouldn't all be going to Sedexo. That's for everything that the district purchases. All of the contracts that are at the school level for before and after, or any of the programs that they have, any of the supplies that they purchased, any of the ordering that's being done for the summer school programs, any of our textbooks that are being purchased, or other reading materials, or any of our grant-funded expenditures that are written into the grant narratives. It's everything that we purchase.
Thank you, Kim, Ms. Adams. I appreciate that. And I do think we want to look at the big picture, because we got 26 schools there. So we've got lots of schools we have to supply needs for. We have to meet the needs of those schools. So I see why that amount would be, you know, the way, what it is. So does that answer your question, trustee Williams? Or did you have anything else you'd like to?
No, I, I'm okay for now.
Yeah. I, I, yes, yes, Ms. Adams, please.
If it helps, that also includes all of our utilities, everything it takes to operate a district, our contracts with Dean, purchasing CATA tokens, and bus passes.
So is that, that's, that line item is actually overall, but it's also a school base, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, within the treasures report is a itemized listing of all of our expenditures, so you can see what we actually spent the money on.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions for Dr. Kavanaugh, or the finance committee, let's say that? No? Alrighty, I guess, here I go again, turning off that microphone. Moving on to our action item, which is our consent agenda, which is included in our packet today, this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Kavanaugh, and moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Nevers Martinez. I got that, didn't I, trustee? Almost? Thank you. I appreciate you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion about our, what's in our consent agenda? No? Okay. All of those in favor of the adoption of our consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The consent, the consent agenda is adopted. Alright. Also, we have the second reading and approval of our policies.
Madam President, I move that we, uh, receive the board, that the Board of Education receive the policies for second reading and approve them as presented as policy 0155, policy 1110, policy 1240, policy 2410, policy 2414, policy 2418, policy 3220, policy 6320, 6321, 6325, 6350, 50, 6520, 8320, 8390, and 8800. It's been moved by trustee Williams?
Second.
Yeah, your neighbor. Supported by trustee Martinez. Alrighty. Is there any discussion in regards to the policies that were just listed to this evening? I know the policy committee was at work in May. Alrighty, okay. With that being, you have anything, trustee?
No.
No, okay. God, you're a trustee. Alrighty. For all those in favor of the, ooh, excuse me. I need a vote. For all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Did I miss something?
No.
Any opposed? Okay. The policies have been passed. Oh my gosh. What's wrong with me? I'm all, I'm all scattered brain. Alrighty, it's all good. So I need a recommended motion. Yes. Talk to me, Dr. Rodriguez.
I move that the Board of Education approve the final superintendent's evaluation for year 2023, 2024 as presented.
Yes, that is our new business. Thank you for moving, moving ahead. That is our, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for that, for lifting that, because we are on to new business, and you had a motion on the floor. Dr. Rodriguez, okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Yes, there is. I have something to say. Can I say something? I would like to read the summary, the executive summary of our superintendent's evaluation for 2023, 2024, if that's okay with you, superintendent?
I'd be honored.
Alrighty. The Lansing School District Board of Education convened on Thursday, May 16th, and again on June 4th, 2024, to conduct the evaluation of Superintendent Benjamin Sholdiner. I said that right, didn't I? I know I did. The evaluation includes six overarching areas of competency: governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, instructional leadership, and pro, instructional leadership and progress towards district-wide goals. Superintendent Sholdiner received a rating of highly effective with an overall score of 90%. The board recognizes the superintendent's ongoing dedication and deliberate efforts to advance the district. His consistent demonstration of exceptional leadership continues to propel the district forward through his forward-thinking practices and commitment to the well-being of the Lansing School District community. The board deeply values the superintendent's dedicated, dedicated efforts on behalf of the students, staff, parents, and the entire community. The comprehensive details of the evaluation, along with this summary, will be documented in the superintendent's personnel file and included in the minutes of June, of the June 6, 2024 meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education. Superintendent Sholdiner, thank you again for serving us. Thank you again for putting our students, our community, our parents first. Continue to stride, and just keep doing what you do. You know, I had to be myself, right? Alright, would you, alrighty.
Thank you very much. That's incredibly, incredibly, it, it's just, it's wonderful. And I really am honored to be part of this district. It's been three years. I look forward to many more. This board has been incredibly thoughtful around both pushing the work that the district is doing, as well as me personally. There's so much more that is yet to be done. But just when you look back on the, over the last three years, you know, the highest graduation rate in the history of Lansing, increasing enrollment for the first time in 30 years, increasing attendance by just so many points, raising test scores in every grade and every subject, you name it. We're moving in the right direction, but we have to do more. The community demands more of us, and I appreciate that this board has faith in me, but also has faith so much in this community that we know that we can continue to do better. So thank you so much for that. Thank you to the board. It's an honor and privilege to serve.
Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez, you were moving so fast, I got confused. So hold up. We did a motion. We had the motion. You moved.
You had a discussion?
Yep, we discussed second. We're good? Do we have a second? Alright, and I did. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm on track, y'all. Alrighty, new business. Nope, that's not a new business.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote? See, look at, we didn't vote. All in, what, do I need to do, can I do a regular vote, or do I need to do an individual vote? Can I do all in favor? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have eight, no, seven, six, six, six okays and one opposed. Got it. Alrighty. Do you have that, Alex? Okay, perfect. Alrighty. Moving on, we have the Gardner change order for the concrete replacement, and the Hill Track change order. Trustee Lopez, you mentioned in the facilities report about that. Do you want to?
Yes.
Can I have a motion, and then we can discuss? Can I have a motion, please? Or do we just?
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve Gardner change order to repair existing concrete around the entire school site, and add additional concrete sidewalk down the parent pickup lane as presented.
Can I have a second? Now, I should have discussed first. Go ahead, trustee. You got it.
It's a simple thing. And it's a sidewalk replacement that needs to be done. And obviously, that, that was a little more than was first expected. So this, this change order is here to be approved by the board. Any additional details? Do you, do you have any, trustee? You sure do have.
Just one thing I wanted to point out with this is that we will be using a sinking fund. So I think as we know, we have the sinking fund to make repairs to district properties, such as roofs and sidewalk, parking lots, boiler replacements, those types of things. And so we will be using the sinking fund to pay for the concrete repairs that need to be done at Gardner.
Alrighty. Any other questions or discussion around this?
Yes. So it's for the entire school, is it?
No.
It is, with the exception of the south-facing. So there's more work that we're going to need to do on the south-facing, because we have tree stumps that are pushing up the sidewalk there. So we're going to need to do additional groundwork on that. But it'll be a repair to all concrete that have cracks in them, that are unlevel, and then adding, we have the parent pickup line that is down the parking lot. Right now, students are walking on grass along the curb, so we're going to add an extended sidewalk there, so that students have a, a safe place to be.
So do we usually wait until we have to do the whole site, or do we have like maintenance that happen?
So it's a combination of both, to be honest. So it depends, the sinking fund is something that we use for these types of projects. So sometimes we have large projects planned, and then we do smaller portions of this work. Like right now, we're getting ready to do some concrete work at Cunden in the parking lot and on the sidewalk. It's smaller repairs. So we do, it's a combination of both. But we're doing a complete overhaul at Gardner now, because we have the sinking funds available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question about the Hill Track and the lighting. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we not? We're not there yet. Don't be laughing at me. I'm so glad we have a sense of humor. We're not all stuffy. We have to be stuffy at times, though. Alrighty. Any other questions about the Gardner change order? Alrighty. To the, can I have a motion?
President, I move.
Yes.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve Gardner change order to repair existing concrete around the entire school site, and add additional concrete sidewalk down the parent's pickup lane, as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
I need somebody to support. I mean.
We, we already, yeah. We got, yeah, we already passed it, but thank you. We're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alrighty.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Hill Track change order to repair current and make upgrades to lighting, lighting as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
And again, you know, you know the track at, at Hill?
Talk about it.
Yeah, and it's, it's used widely by the community there, but it's in really bad disrepair. And also, I don't think, it might have lightning, or sometime it had, but it's, but it's, it's really bad as well. So individuals cannot use it, you know, once it's dark.
Yeah.
So again, you know, this is where, you're going to use bond money still on this one as well?
Sinking fund.
Yeah, sinking fund money. And the total will come to $129,798.13. That'd be the total with the additional 10%, right? The total cost.
That's the total cost.
That's the total cost, right. So, I don't know. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, when will this project be completed? I'm curious.
Yep. The project will be completed no later than September 30th, but we would like it to be completed before school opens. So right now, the project is slated to be done before school opens on August 21st.
Alright. Any questions for trustee Williams?
Are they, because you know they have that little side area that's off of, what's that little street? Pleasant Grove? Are they going to be putting more parking space over there? Are they going to close that back off? Because I see the trucks over there quite a bit.
Sure. So currently, right now, it's where actually the tennis courts used to be, is where people normally would jump to the curb and park. We actually put in a cutout and put in a lane so people can drive up on that right now and park right there. Right now, it's currently closed down while we redo the track for construction, but people will be able to park in that entire area. And there is a lane to actually pull up into the parking lot now.
Are they redoing the gate area too?
We're working on redoing some of the fencing, the fencing around. Yep, there'll be a brand new entrance in there with dedication plaques, because, as the board, I believe remembers that we received a $500,000 allotment from the state of, from the state budget. Thank you, Senator Anthony. And so there'll be a dedication area, very nice, clear new area. New track, obviously. We're also going to be putting in some stands, some goalposts, so the students at Lansing Tech will also be able to use the new field. And then, and scoreboards. And then the lighting, right of it, right now, about half of it works. And so we're upgrading it so that it all works, and obviously making upgrades to the lighting itself, the new poles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, trustee Lopez.
Just another point of information. Summit Contractors is the electrical contractor on this project, and they are from our neighborhood, from Hasslet. And there will be 11 poles with two heads of lights, and there'll be 12 poles with three. So I think it's going to be very, very well illuminated. And it's going to be, this is wonderful for the community. You know, it's one of the things that I think is going to be really, really positive, and for, also for the students at Hill as well. But this is a kind of a community-use track. Everybody's out there.
It's an upgrade for, for the south side, I think. Very nice.
Of course.
Very nice.
And they're also, you know, I guess it goes hand in hand. You, you have Benjamin Davis being upgraded with, with new parking and so on and so forth. So that's just going to lift up the south side really well.
It is, it is. Thank you. All in favor of the board approving the Hill Track changes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alrighty, perfect. So next on our agenda is discussion items. A, discussing, the board discussing the next steps in response to the Memorial Day weekend shooting. I do want to read a statement by our beloved Madam President, who is unable to be with us this evening. Dear Lansing School District family, I apologize for work obligations have required that I traveled out, out of state, making me unable to attend tonight's meeting. While I may not be able to take part in tonight's crucial conversations, I do not want to miss the opportunity to share my heartfelt condolences to both families. Two Lansing School District students were lost in the month of May due to senseless gun violence. These tragedies have a long-lasting impact on the family, the community, the, and not, and unconsequently, excuse me, the students of the district. While these incidents did not take place on school grounds or during school activities, the district remains deeply committed to working with the community, local law enforcement, and other officials to continue the mission of the district, creating a safe and nurturing environment. We know that safety is a building block for unleashing learning potential for children, and it is deeply important that we work together in solidarity to set an example of how to overcome differences without resorting to violence. Although summer break is upon us, the school district is still here and able to provide resources and support to families throughout the summer. Thank you, President Willis. So with that being said, we are open for discussion about the next steps in response to Memorial Day weekend shooting. And I believe one of our trustees or wanted, thank you, wanted this added to the agenda, so I, I lift that you start the conversation.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to lift this up, and I would ask if the superintendent could give any reflections on what he's heard from students and parents in, in reaction to the incidents?
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to. Before I do that, I, I don't know if the board itself wants to have any sort of discussion about what the board would like to do, but I'm certainly happy to share some of the reflections that I've had during the last two weeks. You know, I wrote a quite extensive letter to the community that explained most of the things. But what we're hearing, of course, is that, you know, and this is a change, which I'm really proud of, is that our students and our faculty feel safe in our schools. They feel supported in our schools. They feel like they have people they can talk to. On days of crisis, we actually have a crisis intervention team, where we send in extra support of social workers and guidance counselors and all, and school social workers, school guidance counselors, and a myriad of other folks. You know, Director, Executive Director Black and her entire team of Office of School Culture does a phenomenal job about that. But what we hear, of course, is outside of the schools and within the community, there's definitely a sense that, you know, things could be safer. And I think that what the request of this board and the request of this community is to find ways that we can try to address what's happening, you know, with illegal guns, with proximity to guns, with any of those kinds of things. I will give some big shout-outs to Advance Peace, which is a nonprofit that's been working heavily within the community, MPHI, which is another organization. But, you know, what we hear, like anytime there's a tragedy, it impacts our students, it impacts our faculty, and it impacts our community. You know, I look forward to intense discussions with this board, with our faculty, and with the community to figure out ways that we can do it. But I will say, one of the big things that I heard and why I was so kind of vociferous around what I was saying, is that for years, there's this perception that when an event like this occurs, that this somehow is a reflection on our students, that our kids are bad, or our schools are bad. And nothing could be farther from the truth. You know, we care deeply about our students. Our students are exceptionally talented. Our faculty is exceptionally talented. And I think that sometimes our community feels maligned, be it in the press or in public opinion. And that was something that was certainly weighing heavily on folks. And I think that we really want to address this. The other thing I would say, and, you know, I don't want to go kind of into too much detail, but, you know, sometimes there's these comments like, you know, if only students stayed in school, or if only there were after-school programmings, none of this stuff would happen. What program's going to happen at 2:50 a.m.? And this was a holiday weekend. And some of the students that were hurt were graduates, even early graduates. So I think that the concern from a lot of our students and our faculty too, and that's what I have to give a huge shout-out to so many people who emailed me afterwards, was really as a district trying to make sure that we protect our children, but protect their reputations as well, and our teachers and our faculty. But the more we can do, the better. We would happily work with the city, with any nonprofit that wants to help support our children. We will, of course, have summer programming that we are running. But again, this is, this is a story of how can we make sure that our children are safe at any time and in any part of the community, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. And I do think that as a board, you know, we need to continue to look at where in our health curriculums or our school assemblies or things like that, that we offer those pieces, can we address this topic? You know, maybe it's nonprofit partnerships, speakers, those kinds of after-school programs, so that students feel equipped with the tools they need to report. I hope they find those posted regularly, you know, and it's okay to say things before, during, and after events. I think that's out there, but continuing to lift that up. And then also, you know, as was mentioned, finding ways this board can maybe participate with the city or municipalities, the county even. I don't know if there are resources, maybe other urban school districts are trying, that we could get training on, or, you know, if the board needs to go to a conference or session, that could maybe be something we consider. So I certainly don't have any answers, but I think we have to elevate this topic in our community, given these events.
Sure. And I really appreciate that. And I want to commend this board for caring so deeply that they want to get involved in a deeper level. And I think there are, to talk about work that I've done way before I was here, you know, there's organizations. I sat on the Board of New Yorkers Against Gun Violence, a board chair of something called Kings Against Violence Initiative. There's a lot of nonprofits around the country that are leaders in this. And I would welcome finding ways for the board and executive team and the Office of School Culture and anybody who really wants to be a part of this to do that. I think there's, sadly, we've had shootings in this community before. Sadly, I think we'll have shootings in this community after. But the events that happened around Memorial Day have changed a little bit of this discourse. And I think that's a good thing, where more people are now coming to the table to have these conversations. And so I'm happy to work with this board and honestly, anybody in the community that wants to be a part of ways that we can be proactive around seeing best practice. But again, I will give a big shout-out to Advance Peace and Devon Bogan, as well as MPHI, for a lot of the work that they're doing around gun violence. And also, a shout-out to Lansing 360 for some of the work that they're doing around bringing the stakeholders together. And nobody has the right answer, the only answer, but there's a lot of really good people who want to work on this, and we welcome those conversations.
Yes, trustee Williams and trustee Lopez.
Superintendent, are we going to, I'm sorry. Are we going to be doing the party like we did last year during graduation at the Capitol? And I'm asking for a specific, so we are going to be doing it this year?
So the party at the Capitol is run by a nonprofit. So I think that they've asked for space.
Well, I'm asking because that kind of same scenario came to my mind for our graduates. The weekend after, so usually their last day of school is the weekend for Memorial Day. For our graduates, maybe us doing a private party for all three high schools together during that, maybe during that weekend next year, just to keep them. I mean, because that's pretty much what they were doing, starting their early graduation celebrations. And if we, as a district, can provide them with something like that, or even a lock-in or something like that, to keep them all in out, that will prevent some things. And not just the seniors, but all kids in general, doing stuff like that, maybe once a month.
No, I appreciate that. I think the more that we can do to support our students, the better. And certainly, if the board wants to have a conversation about something on Saturday, that's great. But I do think that the village is doing something. But again, they were the ones in Capitol. It's a nonprofit that runs their own thing.
No. And what I was saying, kind of something similar to that. For our students, not on graduation day, but prior to. So like when the seniors have their last day, which was, I think, that Friday before Memorial Day, and then we had the incident memorial, that weekend, providing them like their own, in the three high schools, their own graduation and celebration together, and keeping them out of, you know.
Sure. Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, I mean, that gives us plenty of lead time, too. We could plan, we can plan something like that next year. Absolutely. Thank you.
Trustee Lopez, I think Ryan, Ryan wanted to share something.
You're talking about the event, the Village Lansing?
Yes.
That's what's on. They did request space at the Breland Center this year, but they were not able to come to an agreement with the Breland Center about hosting that on the grounds. So I do not know where they are holding that this year. We have not heard back from them.
But I really do appreciate the point that trustee Williams is making about, is there something in the future that we can do? And I think that that's a great idea.
Yes, trustee Lopez.
The last I heard is that the, there was still going to be a program in front of the state Capitol for all the students. So that's the last I heard, you know, maybe several weeks ago. I don't know if it's changed or not. But I was going to say that, you know, with the city, the city funds any number of organizations. So does the Community Foundation, The United Way. Maybe there should be an audit in terms of how many organizations are touching base with the community, with families. And how we could, this greater group, you know, that may happen, is that we start to empower families. You know, I mean, everything starts at the neighborhood, at the home. And I think that if we take a very close look and see how we could help families help themselves and their children. Because we always leave that out. I mean, it's either an enforcement issue or some other type of, you know, fix. But I think we need to do it in a holistic way and have conversations with the city about who they fund, what they fund for. And I'm sure that something could come of it if the efforts are not to duplicate, but enforce, you know, certain things. That might be helpful overall.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, were you going to, go ahead.
I agree wholeheartedly, and I think that, I hope that we can spend some really intensive time during the summer with not just the board and the district, but with a lot of the community. Because I think folks want to help, and we just have to figure out the right way to do it.
I actually was going to say the same thing, if we could get everybody to the table, because it's, and I can speak transparently, because I am a parent of someone who was, he, his best friend was murdered, and he survived. So we just finished trial sentencing and everything. And there needs to be more support. I mean, they, while we were in the hospital, they stopped by. But after that, you know, it's been a long two years. And that child of mine didn't get, he's now getting therapy. But he has a little brother that's in the district that was affected by that too. And it's like, we need to make sure that everybody in that family is being reached holistically, because this kid sits in school and saying what's going on with my brother, because he's wondering now, you know, and I can only imagine. I talked to one of the relatives of the young man that went to Everett. She's having a hard time, but she's trying to find ways to help support and build it too. So I think if we can get all the stakeholders, because we're duplicating instead of collaborating. And I think once we create that collaboration, we'll have a better sense of how we can proceed from start to finish. And so I think that's what needs to happen, is to be collaboration.
Yeah, and I mean, offering support services before things happen.
Exactly.
You know.
I agree. I agree with you. I think helping our families help themselves. I think that's important.
And, oh, sorry. And I agree wholeheartedly, and certainly I want to highlight, if anybody in the district wants services, we have a multiplicity of them. Not only do we have Talkspace and Carisolus, but we have a team of folks that are there for you. So I know in my letter, I put a list of a lot of resources. But if anybody listening, and certainly if anybody on the board knows of folks that need support, please direct them to the district, and we can extend ourselves as much as possible.
Superintendent, I do want to ask, if we have families or students that have, that are alum, can they still use some of our services?
Yes, I think so. It depends on how connected they are to the community. You know, if they are a part of a family of a student that goes to the district, and I'll defer to Director Black. But I'm pretty sure that the way we've written some of these contracts is the family is supported, and so I think we can. But we also have, you know, a lot of connections to nonprofits in the district that we can help facilitate that. But Cordelia, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the services we have?
Yes, thank you. That's a really good question. Thank you for asking that question and raising all of these wonderful points. It's been very heavy around the community over the years, or, excuse me, well, years, and of course, this last month. But the services that we have, obviously, I'll start with some of our support services that are in schools. Of course, we have our principals, but our student support specialists, they're working directly with students on a daily basis. And many of them have been, have some training in trauma response. And so they have that approach. We kind of started this trauma approach training many years ago. And it's time for us to kind of, you know, fulfill that training once again. But that's where we will start. We also have school social workers in our schools, as well as mental health clinicians that are in schools, working directly with students. They have more of a mental health approach versus a skill development approach. That's the approach that many of our school's social workers take. In regards to some of the contracts that we have in place, Talkspace is one contract that we have in place, where we offer free text therapy to students and staff members, as well as two virtual sessions for staff and students, as well as family members. There are, it's limited to family members. They have option, an option of participating in what's being offered, but the offerings are limited. So they don't go as far. However, in regards to the community partners, we have a plethora of community partners that we work with out of the Office of School Culture. I can tell you one family that has, in the last two years, has turned down services. And we offer services practically every single day. And so, and the list goes on and on and on. I know that, as well as, I would say, our community partners with the Inglewood County Health Department, as well as in partnership with community mental health. So we have six behavioral health consultants in our schools, as well as our own. So we have them kind of spread out throughout the district. And they live within the, well, at the high schools, they're in our health clinics. So one at Eastern, Sexton, there's one at Everett, Patengale, and Gardner. And so we have these services spread out, so they're easily accessible to our students, as well as family members. And those clinics are open to the public as well. And so family members, as well as community members, can gain access to services through our schools. And those clinics are open year-round, year-round. And so while schools, school may be out, the clinics remain open. The services are available. So those are just a few. I could go on and on, but those are just a few that are accessible right now, right away.
Thank you. And every question I had, you answered it.
That's great.
Thank you so much. Dr. Kavanaugh, did you want to add to the conversation?
Sure. First of all, Ms. Black, thank you so much that also answered some of the questions that I had. I want to position these remarks by saying that I am a developmental psychologist who studies the juvenile justice system and youth crime. And so that is the perspective I'm coming to this from. I really appreciate this discussion, and I completely agree that this is an all-hands-on-deck situation, where we need to triage by using multiple different resources, whether that's partnering with the many community organizations that exist that are doing good work, whether that's continuing our outreach to families, so that they're able to take advantage of supports, whether that's using our excellent mental health services that we just got an awesome rundown from. But I also just want to talk a little bit about youth crime in general. So first, I want to be clear that a lot of the reason for youth crime has to do with normative changes in the adolescent brain. These are changes that happen in every adolescent's brain. So I want to be clear that these sorts of issues, these sorts of developmentally tied issues, are not about kids from certain districts, certain backgrounds. They're not about being bad kids. These are literally just normal changes that happen in kids' brains. Those changes mean that kids are more apt to seek out social rewards. That means approval from friends. It means that they are more apt to take risks. As you can imagine, that has an evolutionary advantage, right? When you're a strong young person, to take risks. And so all children are naturally wired between the ages of about 12 and 25 to seek out risks and to seek out social rewards. To my mind, what can happen during the school day, so a lot of what we've talked about is things that can happen outside of school, which is awesome and is super important. But to address those developmental needs within schools, I see a few roles for the district. The first would be in making sure that kids are connected to positive adult mentors. That doesn't need to be a teacher, but it can be. It doesn't need to be a mental health support staff, but it can be. It can be literally anyone. It can be somebody who works in the front office that is always really kind to that student. It's very important that students have those positive adult mentors, because when they are having a difficulty regulating their own emotions, it's important that there is an adult for them to go to. We want to support our families, give our families the tools they need. But at the end of the day, maybe the family isn't the right place for that youth to seek that outside adult mentorship. So I really enjoyed a few months ago, hearing our presentation about our kind of outside groups that we partner with for mentorship. I think that's also incredibly important to allowing, not only within the school building, but within kind of the school district universe and broader community, creating those connections for adult mentorship. The second thing I want to talk about is extracurriculars. The second thing I want to talk about is extracurriculars. Ben is completely right, that there is no program, sporting event, whatever, that would be happening at three in the morning. However, when kids participate in extracurricular activities, it gives them a pro-social way to scratch that itch for risk-taking and for social rewards. So, when you succeed in a sporting event, or you perform really well in a concert, then you are getting that social approbation, and you are taking a risk that feels really rewarding, and that reduces the need to get that itch scratched for social rewards, for risk-taking, in other non-social ways. And so, yeah, of course, we can't like lock down every kid all night long to make sure they don't leave the house at three in the morning, just in case they do something bad. But if we give them opportunities to get their developmental needs met in a way that's pro-social, then perhaps that can prevent them from seeking out antisocial ways to meet those developmental needs, which again, are normal, and everyone experiences them. The third thing I was going to talk about was mental health support, for which I had some questions from Ms. Black, but luckily, those have been answered. So, I did just kind of want to, I don't know, be pedantic, but just talk about what it is that we can do kind of within the school day that supports kids' developmental needs. Because at the end of the day, while this is a health crisis, a lot of the roots of what's going on just have to do with normal adolescent brain development, and it is our responsibility as a school district to reroute and redirect the way that that normative development takes place, so that it can be expressed in a way that's pro-social rather than antisocial.
That reroute, redirect, yes, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much for this planation and the good things that are going on in this discussion. Definitely has a lot of services, but still things happen. Then we have to study what is wrong, or how we can change, that the students, the community can use these services in different way, a better way, that we don't have happen again. As everybody knows here, in the community, I am a crazy person about school culture. And the school culture is exactly what Dr. Kavanaugh was talking about, how the students and the community belong to something, are part of something. And until we don't have this love, somebody talked about that a few days ago, until we don't have this love in the schools and in the community, in spite of the situation that we have outside, that students are suffering too, the young people are suffering too, for behavior attitudes of adults. But the school has to be, if it's possible, because we can, we don't, we don't need to disconnect the community or the school, we are one. Then, how we can create a school of this characteristic that you were talking about, and especially a school climate. And I think we are going to talk about that more in the retreat, but I ask, the real will be a goal for all of us, to create the schools where the students go with happiness every morning, and where everybody knows everybody, and everybody is welcome, and there's communication. Many of the students don't communicate. We had to find out about the council or the other services, how we communicate with the students, not only make mistakes, but in their regular lives, in everyday life. And I, I think that we had to work together in that. That is, I was surprised that we didn't have all the leaders of Lansing, community, faiths, groups, and others together to, not to say how, say things about the person who do wrong things, we had to be careful about that, how we care about the people who are suffering. Then, thank you, and thank you for bringing that here, but I don't think we finished that today.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think it'll continue, but I think we've got to start. And I think, what I've heard was partnership, right? Working together with the community. Ben has great, or Superintendent, I keep wanting to be personal, has great leads. So, I think us continuing to have this conversation and moving forward, supporting the district, supporting the vision of our district, and our, and what we need to do to meet the needs of our families. So, with that being said, I don't. Yes, Trustee Williams?
I just, I'm hearing Dr. Rodriguez in my head quite a bit, and honestly, I got to see something today, when I had to take my kid his backpack, because he left it. But I walked into the building, and music was playing, and I stood back for a minute and just kind of watched, and I watched the kid's face. The music was so upbeat, I thought I was at a concert. I was like, hold on, I ain't no coffee yet, but this is, then I stopped, I says, you know what, these kids aren't feeling it. So, I stopped one of the kids and said, what's the matter? I don't know. What do you mean, you don't know? And I think a lot of times, they just need to know that we, we say we care, but to be intentional about it, because just having that two to three minute conversation, he danced through the, started dancing through the security and said, thank you. I was like, okay, thank you. So, being intentional, because we don't know what they're thinking a lot of times. They come to school every day, like you said, they don't talk, but something is going on, and just being intentional to say, hey, I want to be a part of your day, let me see you smile, or you look nice today. That goes a long way with our students, and that puts that I care out there to them, but then it's also opening up the door to let, to create a trust, which is a lot of times what's missing. They don't trust people, especially post-COVID, they really don't. So, we have to be intentional sometimes, and go that extra mile, that extra love. I mean, this is just something that I've been noticing just the last year, as I've been into the different schools.
Yeah. Yeah, creating a safe space for our students, and I always say our students, but really the families, the community, the LSD community. I know this conversation is not over. We're missing two amazing folks that I know will contribute to this conversation. So, if there, if there isn't anything else, I'd like to move on to the secretary report, or is there, is that okay? All righty. Is that okay? Did you have something?
Thank you very much, Madam President. June 7, that is tomorrow, right? It's the last day, hot day for all the students, and I know, I can hear all the screaming and happiness, because they are going to come back soon to the school. June 8, graduation for the three high schools, and I think the Superintendent already talked about that very well, congratulations. Summary sport camps available, free to Lansing School District student, registration required. Next board meetings, June 13, 5:30. We need at least five members here, at 5:30, budget public hearing, 6:00 PM information study session. July 18, regular board meeting. And August 1, regular board meeting. That is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Secretary Rodriguez. Are there any, nope, nope, excuse me, sorry, hold on one second. Yes, Trustee Williams? July 18th?
June 13, July 18, August 1. No, that is all I have.
Okay. Stamp of approval, right? All right, right.
Could I clarify, then you said that June 13th is at a different time?
Yeah, 5:30, because it's the approval of the budget, and we had to present that to the community for their comments, or whatever they want. Then we need at least five board, five board members here at 5:30. Thank you for the question. July 18 and August 1.
And all of this also will be in our notes, so we'll have that in our notes as well. Okay, yeah, all righty. So, moving on to public comment on non-agenda items, we have a couple. I do want to remind our public that our members of the public, we do not, wait, members of the public may not address the board, wait a minute, other way around. It's the board policy that we do not comment on public comments, and you have three minutes, and I would like to call Samantha Bailey up to the podium, please. I'm sorry, I had your name first. All righty. No, no, right over there, the podium. We would love to have you over there, that's all right. All righty, thanks.
My son is graduating, graduated from kindergarten last, last Friday from Luton, and my daughter is going to actually start pre-K at Luton next year, which I'm very excited about. We spend a lot of time reading at night, and the fact that he can read both in English and Spanish at six years old is beyond amazing. I was unable to attend the meeting last week, when they were talking about the new building for Luton, but when I got the report back home from other parents and from my husband, that there was no intention of putting a library in the new building, it was very disconcerting for me. As a child who grew up loving to read, I spent countless hours in libraries. I was fortunate enough to be in a position where my parents could drive me to a public library, if it wasn't during the school day. And we are in a position where we can take our kids to a public library, we have two cars, we have transportation, we can do that. There's a lot of kids in this school district that do not have that ability, who reply maybe, or rely on public transportation to get places, and maybe, they can't. And having a library in a school is essential to how they see the world. One book, two books, three books, it is what opens their eyes to a big and beautiful world, and the fact that there won't be a room dedicated for that is quite saddening for me, for a whole generation of kids, because we are putting not as much value on books and on reading. And I know they mentioned putting spots in the classrooms where they would have a book nook, right? But you're not going to be able to have enough books for the entire school year, for the entire classroom. You look at kids who don't read at a higher, at a high level, or read at a higher level, maybe not having all the books that they need to keep succeeding, or to continue to develop their reading skills. And I just, I feel, as a parent, that it is very important to reconsider putting a place in a school dedicated for books, a place that is meant for quiet and reflection, that you don't get in a normal classroom. I've been to my son's kindergarten classroom, there's not a lot of quiet there. I feel it is very essential to a child's development, to have a space for that. I'm running out of time, so thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it.
All righty, so I'm, I'm gonna get this right. Members of the public may address the board for three minutes, it's the board's policy not to respond to public comment. I got a little tongue tied the last time. Sheila Contreras, I think I, yes, we're, who, Maddie? Marcela, did I say her? Come on, could you come up? Could you come up?
Hello, we are students from Luton School. It's the school that will not have a library next year.
We are here because libraries provide knowledge, and that's what schools are for. Studies show at the Center of American Progress by Tanya Martinez, that test scores in knowledge impact are increased when schools have advanced libraries.
This shows that there are more to a library than books. School libraries offer an abundance of resources that many families may not be able to provide for their children.
Libraries are a place to socialize, bringing many kids together. It's a safe place to do almost everything.
School libraries provide much more diversity than a classroom library ever could.
We all care about our school libraries and our, and our librarians.
We created a petition to show you just how many people care. We got more than 120 signatures in two days.
Taking away our school libraries is taking away our knowledge, and that's what schools are meant for.
This is why we need school libraries.
They're babies, they're babies. All right, thank you, thank you, you all, you too, thank you. Sheila, if you could come up, please, pronounce your last name for me. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sheila Contreras, I've lived on the west side of Lansing since the last century. First of all, I want to say that I see allies before me. I see your commitment to the education of our youth and to public service, so thank you. I'm a tenured English professor at a Research One State University, I have been teaching for almost 30 years. I train future teachers. My areas of research and teaching are Mexican-American, Chicanx literature, and Latinx literature more broadly. More recently, I've also begun publishing in the area of Latinx undergraduate academic achievement. I mention my professional credentials only because they are relevant to this issue. People who know me know I do not insist or ever expect to be called doctor, I prefer professor, actually. I think about Latinx student success a lot. I believe our biggest challenge is curriculum, and I think it's related to gun violence. I do. I am sorry we didn't sign up for the facilities report, because we have many questions for Trustee Lopez, some of which I've communicated by email to him. Next meeting, we will be sure to sign up under that agenda item. I am here tonight to speak to the significance, the centrality of library space to the educational mission. Libraries are sacred space. Dividing up, atomizing, fragmenting, fragmenting the library space will destroy community. When you take away library space, you take away the shared experience of meeting and experiencing the written word. You intervene in the oral transmission of that word, fragmenting, isolating student readership. The piecemeal approach to student library experience is symbolic of deeper deficiencies in approaches to supporting student success, which ignore the virtual absence of people of color from the K-12 curriculum. Symbolism, this symbolism stands for something, and symbolically, what that represents is also a material deprivation, which we can think of in terms of books. I remember when physical education and art specialists were eliminated, damn, eliminated from, sorry, the elementary instructional staffing, to this day, my heart breaks when I remember those empty sad rooms that were robbed of instruments lining the walls, and the sound of music stopped coming from them. I have heard so many parents relay, experiencing the tragedy of the end of their child's music education, because they could not afford private lessons. Those, those decisions have reverberated through generations of students. This has left a gap in the education of Lansing's kids, and to remove this space of the library will further diminish, further diminish the potential to empower, it will diminish and disempower the community. Libraries are a space of community conversation, intellectual exchange, individual introspection, philosophical awakening, and for many kids, it is a safe space. To deny Lansing kids a central library, even at one school, is a violation of the right to access to education. And online books aren't enough. You can't, you can't reproduce the experience of touching these. I leave this catalog for y'all to look at.
Thank you, thank you.
I hope you can each imagine somebody you know, reading one of those books, holding it in their hands.
Heidi, Heidi, tell me your last, you're amazing, come join us. Three minutes, and the board will not respond.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Heidi Frye, I am a parent in the Lansing School District. I have two Lobos, one was here tonight, I also have a kindergartner, and we are so grateful for the education that we've been able to give our daughters at Luton, to have that bilingual education, and to have the access to Spanish and to culture there. We're doing really good things in the district. I commend Superintendent, I commend all the staff for the great things that we are doing. I'm here to talk about and address the disinvestment in libraries, and I mean the physical library space, but I also mean the librarian, the staff, that person that could also be the positive adult mentor. And I love that trustee called that out, to have that positive adult mentor, who, as a librarian, also reinforces the curriculum. It's another piece of the school village, to share books, to share knowledge. It's another piece of the school village to share books, to share knowledge, um, with the students. So I'm here to talk and, and address that, but I also, I, I want to say that, um, you know, with tomorrow being the, the last day of school, you know, this is, um, the last week of school. And what we have seen at Luton, it, with the students, is that these kids are excited about the end of school, but they're excited about books and they're excited about the library, okay? They organize this very rapidly, um, within the last couple of days. And everyone's excited about the last day of school in the summer, but they are unified in the need for the librarian, but also retaining a library space as that nexus of learning. So when we look at libraries statewide, Michigan ranks, uh, according to some sources, 46th in the nation for support of librarian staff. That has an impact on things that we all care about, that we've heard the board to talk about tonight, the positive mentors, but also for literacy and also for the graduation rates, which are important metrics for us, for the testing. Um, these are things that distinguish high-performing schools from those that don't perform as well. So when it comes to the immediate, you know, next school year, we're told we won't have a library. Long-term, our facilities, you know, we've heard about facilities, we need that space so we can have children that can access books, whether they read above or below level, they can get those resources in English and Spanish that they need in that centralized space so they can be served and not have these fragmented pods or book nooks, what, we're not quite sure what, what the plans call for. But we invite you to reconsider that, to have that community space where books are safe and sacred. Thank you.
Alrighty. Alrighty. There, are there any comments from our board members at this time? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, superintendent, secretary, and community in general. It is with a lot of love, that I am going to say a few words about Mildred Richardson, who passed away on, at age of 93, May 18, 2024. Mildred was born on March 6, 1931, in Kewblass, Arkansas. She was daughter of Mr. Henderson and the lady Rebecca Lee Gardi. She was graduate of the Kewblan High School. He attended Philander Smith College in Little Rock, Arkansas. She furthered her education by attending and graduating from Big South College in Marshall, Texas. Earned her master's degree in education administration from Michigan State University in East Lansing, Michigan. She started her professional career in Lansing School District, teaching the physically handicapped and hearing impaired. Her career quickly advanced and she was appointed principal of Henry North Elementary School. She led the leadership and the design of the school and developed the program for physically impaired, hearing impaired, and general education students. Few days ago, a board member said we had to honor the heroes with our local heroes. There are heroes, they are very popular and they are heroes who make history in the community every single day. And Mildred Richardson was one of them. It's, um, tremendous work that she was doing. Unlike her, there were so many, so many, uh, staff members and students and that they were part of the Lansing School District for the, for the beginning, that we had to honor these people. We had to honor her and to talk about her, I don't know, asking for a moment of silence and asking for all of us to follow her steps, to follow her, what she did as a principal and how much he cared about the people who need the most, that what we were talking a few minutes ago in this board. Then, thank you very much, um. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any other, um, comments from the board at this time? No? Alrighty, well, before meeting is adjourned, we have graduation on Saturday, so we want to be there bright and early, bells and whistles, all that good stuff. Um, bring your, your robe if you need to. I think trustee or Madam President, um, shared with us, um, what we should bring, our robe or whatever you need. And also there was information given about the, um, graduation. Tomorrow's the last day of school, everybody's excited about that. Um, so yeah, yeah, if there's no other comments before the board, or no, if there's no other comments from board members, um, can I have a motion?
I move.
Ooh, no, no, that one's, no. Yes. Okay, can I have a second? Alrighty, um, at 7:57, the meeting is adjourned. That ain't go back eight o'clock, thank you, Jesus.